Call them waiting to order for tonight's, March 8th. And as we start out every meeting, we will start off by reading the mission statement. Norfolk Public Schools offers a safe, joyful, and challenging learning environment that meets the needs of our diverse students. Through school, family, and community partnerships, we provide an education that inspires lifelong learners and cultivates a caring and productive citizens for our ever-changing world. Roll call, please.
Jeff Curry.
Paul Cochran.
Mark Flaherty.
Thomas Doyle.
Ingrid Lardney.
All right, so we'll lead off with our budget. And I guess introduce, I guess have Todd just come up and do this through that?
I'm going to walk through the presentation.
You can do that, okay.
Paul's going to jump in as you want to add.
As needed.
And then we'll have time for public comments.
They're not even going to sit in the front row. They're all the way to the back.
All right, so for tonight's purposes, we're just going to review the proposed 2017 budget request and answer any questions that people may have. As long as we do usually start with our mission statement, which Thomas just read to open the meeting, but I think that it's really important as a budget guiding when we're looking at what to include in the budget, where we can potentially make cuts and reductions. We do use this as a guide, and we try to make decisions that protect the instructional core, strengthen our curriculum and learning environment, foster school-family partnerships, and also promote good citizenship. Want to talk about the budget's history? I'm happy to talk today.
Sure.
Okay. So as far as the budget history, annually for schools to just bring forward their existing staff and open their doors typically the way you would close in June, it typically costs between 3% and 4% just to level fund your budget, bring forward the existing staff, and absorb any costs in terms of inflation for supplies and expenses. So I'm just giving the budget history because when you think of a 3% to 4% would be a level funded, level-service budget, any years that you see below that are years that the district encountered fairly deep cuts. So when you look at a budget history and you look at years like 2011, you're looking at minus 3%, it would have taken 3.5% to 4% to open, so you're really looking at almost 7% cuts. At the same time, there are changes on the state and federal level. Federal-state entitlement grants between 2009 and currently have been reduced by about And with that decrease in funds, there was also an increase in unfunded state mandates that impose some significant costs to districts. So we have a new education evaluation system. We had to provide training for all of our staff, for all of our administrators. We had to buy a package program for managing that data. That came at a cost of about $40,000. We have many new requirements for professional development. We have to provide sheltered English immersion training for all of our students, for all of our teachers that may be working with a student that has English language learning needs. We have to do suicide prevention training, crisis prevention training, and all of that comes at a fairly substantial cost of about $50,000. There's been increased federal and state demands for data collection and reporting, which has a staffing impact in terms of time, as well as a technology infrastructure impact at about $20,000. And McKinney-Binto Transportation is a moving target. That's a district's requirement to provide transportation if a child moves into Norfolk and is in, living with a relative or in a non-traditional situation where they're considered homeless under the McKinney-Binto Act, the district's required to assume the cost of transporting that child back to their home district. So that's a cost that we can't budget for because it changes annually. If you look at the budget impact of some of these new mandates, you can see that our budget request for next year is up by about 4.27%. 2.66% of that is just to level services, again, moving current existing staff forward and managing the contractual changes, steps and lane changes, and a 2% COLA for non-union staff. 1.6% of that total, 4.27, is reflective of the costs that we had to assume for unfunded mandates at the state and federal level. So only about 5.55% of that reflects any new growth or new initiatives that the district is putting forward. So the impact of the declining revenues between 2009 and 2013, there were many classroom teaching positions that were eliminated. We lost instructional support staff. The elementary foreign language program was cut. The health education program was also eliminated. Technology staff were lost. There was a reduction in funds. Actually, there was zero funding for new curriculum materials in adoption. And during that period of time, the district also had to add fees for transportation and band just to manage operating costs. There was also reductions in library staffing. The last few years, the town has really worked hard to support the school budget. We have been funded at about 4% and 1/4% on average for the last three years, and have been able to start to make some progress towards restoring some of the things that were lost during the recession years. So some of the classroom teachers' positions have been brought back. We have added back some developmental math support. We've also added developmental reading teachers back. We've brought back several of our instructional support staff that had been reduced. The elementary foreign language program is something that we're currently reviewing. That is not included in this budget request, not just because of funding, but because of issues and challenges as far as sustainability of that program. There's a critical shortage of certified foreign language teachers across the state of Massachusetts. So we're looking at a blended learning solution. We anticipate bringing a request forward possibly next year to reconstruct and offer some form of foreign language instruction at the elementary district, but we're not ready to do that yet. Technology staff has partially been restored. We've added back our tech integration specialist positions, although the director of technology is still a shared position, so we have a .5 position for the technology director. We have restored the funds for curriculum materials. This year, we were able to eliminate the cost of the transportation fee for families, and we still have the band fee, but that's something we're looking towards in the future of possibly eliminating. We've partially restored the library staffing, and then last year, we were able to eliminate tuition costs for our full-day kindergarten program. Just to give the public a graphic, the Norfolk Public Schools have historically underspent compared to the state per pupil average spending. So I think we have done a good job of being fiscally conservative with our budgeting. On average, the state spends about $14,500 annually per student. Norfolk's at about $13,800. And when you can compare Norfolk to other elementary districts that the Department of Ed compares us to regularly, they pull like districts. There are districts that have similar demographics, similar populations, serve a similar age range of students. We are really pretty much flat in the middle of per pupil costs, and these are all elementary districts that don't have high school programs that they're funding. I think it's important to note that I feel that the residents in Norfolk get a good return on their investment. While our per pupil costs are lower than average on the state, we do continue to demonstrate high standards and achievement on both state and local measures. So compared to that same reference group of other districts, Norfolk performs in the top 91% on the state MCAS tests. Class sizes in Norfolk are also lower than average with a lower-than-average student-teacher ratio. We continue to offer outstanding arts education programs in music, arts, choral, and an award-winning band program, which is actually here tonight practicing. Our Norfolk students continue to have physical and health education. The physical education is twice a week. They have a health education class once a month. The majority of our teachers also have advanced degrees and more than 10 years' teaching experience. We have a very low staff turnover, and we have clean, safe, and well-maintained schools. Given the difficult fiscal years that we had, we've really worked hard to be conservative with our budget. And as I mentioned at the beginning, with the, we use the mission statement as a driving budget document. So what we've tried to do is look for areas where we could create some cost savings to allow us to reinvest in the general ed and in curriculum initiatives. So we partnered with the town of Norfolk. We've restructured two positions at this point, the director of technology and the director of facilities. Both are now being shared with the town, generating an annual savings of about $60,000. We also developed a plan to cost-share professional development with Rentham, King Philip, and Plainville, and that helps us to offset some of that mandated required training costs, and that saves us about $10,000 annually. We've developed many in-district programs. A couple of years ago, we added an intensive specialized preschool program. We've strengthened our therapeutic and social-emotional programs at both buildings. And as a result of that, we've been able to maintain students in district that would have otherwise been in out-of-district placements, and we've actually been able to bring students that were outplaced back into the district. And the estimated cost savings that we're realizing annually for that is about $478,000. Last year, we updated bus routes. We eliminated one of the buses, the cost of one of our buses, and were able to maintain ridership under capacity. That saves us annually about $35,000. And currently, we're in the process of having an energy audit completed at the H-Live Day School, and we'll be looking for potential areas of savings through, as a result of that audit. 2017 budget request is $11,349,77. It's an increase of 4.27%. And what this request will allow the district to do is really strictly maintain our level services. It allows us to meet our contractual obligations for salary increases. It also will allow the district to add two part-time positions, a point-by-position for our ELL teacher. We've had an increasing number of students that have been identified as ELL learners, and the state has very tight regulations about the amount of direct instruction each of those students is supposed to receive based on their English proficiency level. So in order to meet the needs of the students we currently have identified, we have to increase that teaching position. We also need to add a .5 special education teaching position up at the Freeman Kennedy School, and that will be to meet the needs of some of the students that we will be returning from out-of-district placements in terms of their IEP and direct academic programming. The proposed budget also allows us to add one classroom teaching position, and that's to meet the demands of changing enrollment, which I'll kind of walk through at the end of the presentation. And we'll have to increase the music position by .1 to accommodate the additional classroom. Recommended budget, we do have two teachers retiring. We anticipate a savings of $51,299 for that. We're expecting savings of about $55,000 in our medical therapeutic service line. Special education transportation will be down by $51,085, and that's, again, a result of returning students that are currently being serviced, provided services out of district to their home school. We will see a savings of about $15,577 in the shared facilities position. And we have reduced the expense line at the central office level because we had to, for the first two years of the teacher's contract, we had a requirement to provide reimbursement for fingerprinting, which was another unfunded state mandate that we had to assume, but that is coming to completion. So that's why that money's being eliminated. Budget additions, we have about $216,871 for steps, lane changes, and cost of living required by the teacher's contract. All of the other non-union steps are budgeting a 2% COLA at a cost of $79,093. We have a $58,686 cost for the additional grade-three teacher. The .5 ELL teacher comes at a cost of $29,343. The 1-0 kindergarten aide at $20,000, that is not a new position. That is a position that was funded in the past by the kindergarten grant and by tuition, and we have to move that into the operating budget for next year. The .1 music teacher is about $5,800. The .5 special education teachers, $29,343. We do have to add some paraprofessional staff to support the increased enrollment in special education, and we've added lead custodian stipends to recognize that we will only have a .5 facility director in the future, and we need someone to assume some of the day-to-day operational responsibilities of each building. On the expense side, the H-Live Day Services and Supplies and the Freeman Kennedy Services and Supplies are each up by a little over $5,000. That reflects the cost of our math textbooks. We had a five-year purchase. We're going into the sixth year of that program, so we have to assume the cost of the textbook for next year. They're really about $20,000 for each building, but you only see a $5,000 increase because the principals shaved all their other expense lines and tried to choose a budget and keep that cost minimal. Special education supplies, this is up by about $3,300. You'll see the out-of-district tuition number is up by $72,864. That does not actually reflect an increase in tuition, but rather a decrease in the state circuit breaker reimbursement program. Softwares and licenses is up by about $4,500. Professional development, again, as I talked about, some of the mandated new requirements we have there is up by about $7200. Transportation is the third year, no, it's the second year of our new transportation contract, and that just reflects the increase in the transportation contract. We have some facilities maintenance and extraordinary maintenance needs at the H-Live Day School. The school is aging, so we have some HVAC work that needs to be done, some plumbing and some minor repairs, so we budgeted for that. And then the technology maintenance is really just for server maintenance. Class size projections for next year are very consistent with what we have this year. We anticipate we will need to run seven kindergarten sessions. The enrollment was, I think it was around 126 last time I checked, and we do continue to get enrollment throughout the spring and summer. So we're projecting meeting seven sessions with an average class size of about 19.2. We will need seven first grades next year to accommodate the seven kindergartens we have this year. That would be a class size, average class size of about 18.9. Grade two will be down by two positions. We'll run five second grades next year with a class size of 20.6. We need to go up to seven third grades, and that will be an average class size of 19.2. We'll be down one fourth-grade position, up one fifth-grade position, and down one sixth-grade position. So when you net that out, there will be some changing, obviously, of teaching assignments, but when you net it out, it's an increase of one teaching position, which is the third grade that I mentioned earlier. Just to kind of give you a sense of how the budget breaks down, 67% of our total budget is dedicated to professional salaries. 4% of the total budget is clerical salaries, and 12% would be other salaries, so custodial, food service, and other, or paraprofessional staff. 9% of the budget is dedicated to services, so that would be your transportation contract and other contracted services. 6% is for supplies. We have 1% for other expenses and 1% for tuitions. We recognize that the town has some tight financial parameters, and so there are several items that we would like to be able to add in the future, but we haven't included in this budget request. We would like, down the road, to be able to restructure our library program. Our library program runs very successfully right now, but relies heavily on volunteer parent support, and as parents leave the system, we need to be able to replace that and have staff that are available to run the library. We'd like to increase our tech integration specialists at the H-Live Day from a .4 to a .5, primarily for recruiting power. It's very hard to fill a position with a highly skilled teacher, certified teacher at a .4. We'd like to add some additional funding for professional development and funding for summer curriculum development work. We would like to eventually eliminate the band fee. We would like to increase the extraordinary maintenance for H-Live Day, again, knowing that that building's starting to age and we're anticipating additional costs moving forward. And down the road, we really would like to see the foreign language program restored, and that estimated cost, again, with some sort of a blended learning solution, would be about $100,000. But these are items that we're not moving forward at this time, but just want the committee to be aware of. Ready for questions? All right. So you can bring the committee back up, and any questions that people have?
Good job.
Thanks. You can tweak anything for the town meeting if you want to change anything.
Okay.
Mess it up and something could happen. All right.
Since it's a public hearing, I guess we don't have any public input unless anybody wants to come.
Questions? Yeah, not much of a public presence, but anyone, Jeff, Mark, myself, any other questions, comments?
I think it makes a lot of sense. Good, nice job.
Yeah, I think it's a good presentation. It tells the story accurately and honestly, and it illustrates the challenges that the district has had over the past few years and how, despite those challenges, they've still been able to offer high-quality education with minimal increases in funds.
We awarded three bonus points in the back for the budget impact new mandate slide. That was very well done. It was a very nice slide. Todd wasn't willing to give any, but we said we were going to do it, so.
He tried to take credit, but we knew.
Yeah, he did. He said, "No one else helped him." That's what he kept saying. No, that was very good. I mean, thank you very much. I think that is, take away what Paul just said. I think, obviously, well thought out. I think there's a lot of good that it begins to address. There's, obviously, with our wish list there at the end, there's still a number of things we'd like to get to, so we'll slow and steady, we'll keep getting to that, but I think we're getting there. I like, as someone who's been on here now six years, seeing some of those numbers in the red, it's sort of nice to see us move past those and have nicer increases over that as opposed to massive decreases, so that's very nice to see. Like, it's just other random thought, I don't think any of it's possible, again, without, I think you mentioned this, without the cooperation of the teachers, the parents, the staff, students, everyone, whoever I'm forgetting, I don't mean to, I just, I can't thank that enough. I think that is the biggest difference for why you see all this stuff work nicely together, so that is wonderful to see, so. Anybody else say anything else? All right. So we adjourn that, and then our super meetings will vote on it, right? Okay. So we'll adjourn this portion of the meeting and then promptly remeet. All right, let's put that one aside. And we're back. All right. So we'll join, start the regular part of the meeting. I'm going to say the mission statement and the roll call carried over from the first part of the meeting, so we won't go through that portion again. Public comments, again, as we established, not much going on there. Correspondence, nothing going on there. School chair report, continuing our trend, we're okay there. So now, moving back to Ingrid, we've got several items, looks like to vote on calendar and so on, so I'll turn the floor over to her.
All right, so we have four items to bring forward for vote tonight. The first is the proposed calendar for 2016-17. What you'll note is that this calendar is identical to the calendar that was presented at the last meeting with one exception. We discussed the November 23rd day prior to Thanksgiving being a half-day, so we've restored that as a half-day. Thomas had asked about the possibility of switching the May 26th day, which is currently in early release, and making that the no-school day. But we can't do that if we make the November 23rd a day for students because it would add a date to the teacher's contract that'd be expected to be here both days versus the one. So it would put us at an 184-day. So we've left the May 26th as a half-professional development day. The Teachers Association would love to see that down the road become a full day. They use that for placement for other discussions.
The May 26th day?
Yeah.
For the Friday before?
Right. But we would have to cut a different day of the, you know, one of the other full professional development days to make that happen because, again, we have an 183-day contract and 183 days scheduled in this calendar.
Okay.
So it is at a half-day.
All right, so we'll put that aside for next year to try to make that a priority, too.
We can take a look at that and weigh it against. We have some other challenges with the other two. This year, we have to close for the November 8th, so that has to be one of our professional, full-day professional days because of the election.
Of the election, okay.
And then we have another day that's a full professional day that is shared with the other districts that allows us to do some of that cost-sharing for professional development. So, you know, it is a challenge in terms of looking at those full days.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion to accept the 2016-2017 school calendar?
Make a motion.
Go ahead.
To accept the 2016-17 school calendar.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, you have a fundraiser request from the Grade Six Promotion Committee. It is, actually, there's two. There's one that the Norfolk Student Council is putting forward to run, and it has to do, they want to do a hot day where students can donate money to a family in Norfolk who lost their home and all their belongings in a fire. This was organized by the Student Council and is being brought forward at their request.
Okay. Do we have a motion to accept this fundraiser request?
I make a motion that we approve the fundraising request.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seems like a no-brainer. You all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The second is two requests for fundraising activities the Six Grade Promotion Committee would like to run. One is a Pizzeria Uno fundraiser in Rentham where families can go, and if they purchase food that night, a portion of the proceeds are donated back to the school. And a fifth and sixth-grade dance that would be organized thematically and with school staff supervising. They've run this in the past, and it's been successful. So they would like approval for those two fundraising requests.
Okay.
I make a motion that we approve both fundraising requests.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
The last item you have, actually, we have two more, sorry. You have a letter in your packets from the Norfolk Federal Credit Union. The context around this is that the Norfolk Credit Union has run a financial literacy program, after-school program course, at both the H-Live Day and the Freeman Kennedy for probably the past 10 years or so. I think they put in exactly how many. The event has been well-attended. We have usually about 25, 30 students at each school that participate in this. They have run it in the past for no cost, and they are requesting that the school committee consider waiving the room rental fee to allow them to run this at no cost to students and to allow them to send information home with, in backpacks so that students are aware of the program. They originally had considered applying for partnership, but because they really do this just a single event, they wouldn't qualify for school partnership. They had considered running their program through the rec department, who is a school partner and would have access to being able to do those mailers, but if they did it through rec, they would have to charge a fee, and they're trying to keep the program free for students.
Okay. Do we have a motion on this?
Make a motion to accept the Norfolk Community Federal Credit Union.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Of course. And further discussion?
I did have a question. So it does say that they've run it for 15 years. Any feedback on how it's gone, how it's been received by the kids?
I don't know if, Lynda, do you want to comment on that? You'd have to come to a microphone because you're on camera, sorry.
It didn't.
Yeah, it has, my understanding is it's been well-received by students and families, but I think Lynda could probably speak more, not to put her right on the spot.
No, no, that's right, yeah. Okay. No, it has, the program has been very well-received by students and parents. The kids really enjoy it because they feel like they're learning about banking, and they open up a little savings account. I think the credit union gives them $5 to start, and then a lot of the kids really go on from there to save on a regular basis. You know, parents have said that it's taught them, you know, the children early, the whole concept of formal banking, whereas they've, you know, encouraged the kids to save at home, and they're piggy-banks and everything, but this is actually going to a bank, to the credit union in this case, to deposit money. And that they've had kids that have started their accounts, this is what Mrs. Steer has said, have started their accounts like in second grade and are still going to them when they're in college, you know, to get their debit cards and their savings accounts and all that type of thing as they go off to college. So it's been very well-received, and usually it, they're maxed out with the number of children that enroll, so.
Great. Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I'm just curious, you know, I like the idea of the program. For some reason, I feel like this is the first time I've ever heard of it, and I've been doing this for a little while now. I'm just worried that if we do waive it, are we going to be setting a precedent for other people to apply in the future saying, "Well, hey, I want to do this at no cost. Can we waive the fee?" I know we have the ability to do it on a case-by-case basis, but I'm worried about setting a precedent.
We did waive the fee last year. I don't know if you recall, but the Girl Scouts wanted to do a career fair, and we really looked at the parameters that the event was exclusively for Norfolk students for the betterment of the, for the children. And that was the criteria that we had used to consider that program.
Okay.
I think it's a good point you raised, but I think that this is so specific.
Yeah.
And so narrow in its focus, I think it's fine. I mean, obviously, anyone in the world asking these questions, then yes, you're exactly right, but I think with this or the Girl Scout example, something like that, I think in those instances, I'd argue we have an obligation to waive it for that, just the greater good type thing, so.
Yeah, that was just my, that was my.
I think it's always good to think about when you're, when you're.
The subject matter is, I think, crucial.
Right. Right.
To kids, and it's even to their generation. There's a lot of generations that have gone through many years of school without any focus on personal finances whatsoever, and.
And the focus of the upper program. Yeah, I think it's, I mean, it's based on a state program, and the upper skill is, at the upper grades, they're really teaching them about how to develop a budget, how to portion money, how to plan ahead, so I think it does meet a, an educational need.
Wish I had that class when I was in school.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then the last item we have for tonight is a vote on the FYI two thousand seventeen budget, on bottom-line request, which was, again, I can give you the number, it was eleven.
Page? Oh, here it is.
Eleven million, three hundred and forty, thousand, nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
Wait, no, is it ten-eight?
I make a motion that.
Yep, that was last year, and that was two thousand seventeen.
Oh, no, no, sorry.
So, it's eleven, it's on the two thousand seventeen budget request.
Got it, thank you. All right, a little motion for that, I'm sorry.
I make a motion that we approve the budget as presented.
Okay, do we have a second?
I second that.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then to committee reports.
All right, moving on to committee. Jeff's not here, so King Philip, no, so move on to policy.
We have two second readings, one of policy EEC, the executive sessions, and the other one is ECRD, tuition for, pay, tutoring for pay. Wow.
And there were no changes recommended to either, based on the first readings.
Yeah, it does say tuition, though.
Oh, on the, oh, on the agenda, sorry.
Mark wins that one.
Tutoring, sorry.
Like, I know I didn't misread it. It's like third-grade reading. Pretty sure I passed that class. Nothing changed since the last reading, so.
Okay. I'm sorry, so nothing changed in either of them?
There were no recommendations.
Okay. Just make sure I heard you right. I know you said it on the second one, so, okay. All right, let's see, technology, Jeff, so he's not here. Budget, I don't know what you really have beyond what we've just done, Paul, but the floor's yours if you have anything.
I don't think there's anything, I don't think there's anything to add right now on the budget.
Let's see, all right, so moving on to new business, we have a renewal application for Norfolk Rec. So, do we have a motion to accept Norfolk Rec to be, continue to be a partner?
So moved.
For the second.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion on that one? No? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. We also have renewal application for partner for the Wellness and Nutrition Task Force. So, a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second it.
Okay, any further discussion? So, you see none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll slow down for a second, let Pam catch up here, but. All right, so for the meeting minutes, I did not see anything to add. So, do we have a motion to accept the meeting minutes as is?
I make the motion we approve the meetings from the last, the minutes from the last meeting.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And next up, we have the proposed school meeting on Tuesday, the twelfth of April. Does that work for everybody?
Uh, yeah, works for me.
Just double-check, bear with me one second.
Jeff's not voicing in opposition, though, so you're okay with it, too.
Twelfth, I'm good. All right, so we'll make it the twelfth. Just put that in real quick before I forget. Done. I think that's it, right? All right, we are adjourned. Nice work.
All right.